I'd like to call this meeting to order. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. It's 7:37. And I see you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two things before we call roll. Originally, there was some difficulty getting online, but our connection is now working. CCAP for those elected officials following along at their seat. CCAP will get you on there. Second, those of you who are more observant in the City Council chambers will recognize that early voting has started today. It ends at 7:30. So, we're going to continue. They're just packing up. We are not stopping anybody from voting, but sometimes we have to share. That having been said, I'm going to ask for Clerk Tamer to call the roll.
Kennedy?
Here.
Hanquist?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Mulliner?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Sabatino?
Here.
Leader?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Bram?
Is that Bram?
Here.
Plomsky?
Here.
York?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Levin?
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. Thank you, Alderman York.
You're welcome.
We should switch chairs. Fourteen present, zero absent. We have a quorum. On to Agenda Item 3, 3.1. Proceed of written communication from the public at this time. Is there anybody who has any written communication they wish to submit at this time? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go on to public forum. Agenda Item 4. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. Once you're recognized, we ask that you make way to the microphone over here on my right, your left. Please state your name as we are recording this. Addresses are optional. Out of respect for the work that we have to get done here this evening, and in respect for others who may want to talk, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you go over three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. At this time, Clerk Tamer, is there anybody who has signed up for public forum?
Yes, Mayor. Pete D'Esani?
Terrific.
Good evening, everybody. Pete D'Esani, 753 Fairfield Avenue in Elmhurst and 421 North County Farm Road in Wheaton. I'm a county board member representing the 2nd District, but today I'm here to talk about an issue that actually affects the 1st District, which is where I'm from. When I requested the traffic accidents at the intersection of York and Diversey, Chief Ruth had sent this report to me. In 2015, an 1114, two cars, an angle accident with injuries. In 2015, a 128, two vehicles turning was the issue there. And 129, 2015, the next day, another two vehicles sideswipe. And 22, 2015, three motor vehicles turning accident. And 23, the very next day, two vehicles, angle, an angle accident at the intersection. And 424, three motor vehicles turning. And 94, two motor vehicles, rear end collision. And 1030, two motor vehicles sideswipe. And 1113, two motor vehicles turning. And 1127, less than two weeks later, two motor vehicles, angle. And 2017, and 63, two vehicles turning. And 1125, 17, two vehicles turning. And 126, 18, two vehicles turning. And 27, 2018, two vehicles sideswipe with injury. And 57, three motor vehicles, rear end collision with injuries. That was when I asked for the report before we all came out. I don't know what the accidents are from that point till now, but that's a little snapshot of that intersection. That's something the warrant study doesn't really talk about. It talks about numbers. It talks about what's the traffic flow through the intersection. It doesn't talk about the schools that are right next door, like Churchville and Conrad Fisher, where my siblings went to school. Both principals have signed on board to have a traffic control light at this intersection. Every county board member representing the district, from Sam Tornatori to Don Pacowski, to Ashley Salmon, to our sheriff, to our regional superintendent of schools, Darlene Rossetti, the village of Bensonville signed on. We've got a challenge up there. The study that you're going to approve tonight does not give us a light and gives us a handful of solutions to deal with some sideswipes. The left outs, which happened literally a week or two ago, that caused the two cars to be totaled, that's not going to be fixed unless we get a light up there. That's what caused the death back in the 90s. I don't know what to say to make sense to try to get you guys to try to vote for this and spend some money, but we have a safety issue up there, obviously, based on just pure numbers. Some accidents are within one day of each other. So, I ask for your help. I ask for your consideration. There are some members of the community here I'm sure will speak. We've had issues like this at Lincoln School, where we did not meet any warrants, and we put a four-way stop by Lincoln School. If we were to apply warrant studies to every single traffic control device in this town, 90% would come down, because they would not meet the warrant studies. But we, the leaders of this community, stepped up and chose to make those intersections safe. I'm asking you all to step up and make this intersection safe. Our kids need this. Our families that cross this intersection making left outs, that do this every day, you know, those are T-bone accidents. Those could be fatal. That's the challenge. Sideswipes coming out of McDonald's while there are hindrances, they typically don't cause major injuries. The curb cuts will help those, but the only thing that's going to cure the left outs is a traffic control device. It's important. I don't know what more I could do politically to get everybody on this, except for you guys and gals, and I would hope that you would step up. But just these sheer numbers, some accidents within one day of each other, I believe there's 16 accidents I just read off since 2015, and again, that just was up to about a year ago. You guys have the current numbers. It's a lot, and it's only a matter of time until we have a major problem up there, and shame on us for not stepping up and doing something. So, with that, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Joe Marchucci?
Well, here I am again. Seems I started this campaign for the benefit of the residents of Crown Estates in 2018. I'm very disappointed in this council in reference to the money that they spent on this study, and the warrants came back partially, not even in favor of an intersection correction there. It just seems that common sense never rules. It's more like people just don't understand what's going on there. I spoke to an individual, if I can have your undivided attention up there, I'd appreciate it. I spoke to an individual who works for a company, same kind of company that the one that you hired to take this survey. This individual told me, "We are not concerned with the accidents. We are not concerned with the complexity of what happens and how it happens. We just do numbers of cars going back and forth." Well, that's BS. It doesn't help anybody. One of the things that I would like this council to understand, too, is that that north end has a lot of relatives, and if you want to do a survey on this, you should, that are related to people in midtown Elmhurst, south Elmhurst, and they're very concerned about what happens to them and their relatives out there where I live. I started this, and I was started, I was 56 years. Now, I'm living there 57 years. And the people up there are very upset. They see the newspaper articles, they want to know what Elmhurst Council is doing, and these people all vote for you people up there. And I just wanted to make you aware of the fact that those people that live there are related to a lot of people that are in Elmhurst, south, and midtown, and you should do a survey on that, because when it comes to, and this is not a threat, it's a fact, when it comes to a vote for you people to stay in your positions where you're at, those people are going to take a good, hard look at this. And the next time accidents happen there, and people get killed or maimed, I don't know who's going to be at fault here. That's all I got to say.
James Ignoffo?
I'm James Ignoffo. I've lived in Crown Estates since 1998. I think the situation at York and Diversey, as far as traffic flow and accidents, is well documented, obviously. I want to speak to the kids who walk through that neighborhood, getting off the school bus, come out of Conrad Fisher on a daily basis. Traffic going westbound on Grand tries to beat the light at Grand and York by racing down Crown Road to Diversey, to York Road, to try to cut 30 seconds off their commute. There's kids, again, coming off of the school bus and leaving school, and they're not paying attention, because they're kids. And I've seen it time and time again, where cars just race down the street. I truly believe a stoplight at Diversey and York will counteract that, to where if they realize they're not going to shave 30 seconds off their commute, they won't take it. Also, it's forcing more traffic into the neighborhood, that people go down Van Aken to Crestview or wherever, to try to avoid Diversey and York, because it's simply very, very difficult and dangerous to turn off of Diversey. So, I thank you for your time, and I thank you for listening.
Nicholas Ignoffo?
Nicholas Ignoffo. I have lived at Crown Estates for 30 years now, and as my father pointed out, the traffic flow from Crown and Diversey for people trying to race and beat York and Grand, it's also the exact opposite. Every time I stop to go to my parents' house, I am driving down York Road northbound off of Grand, and I see, or southbound, apologize, I see people having to slam on their brakes because they're not paying attention on the turn, because there's a school bus dropping kids off, and there's kids crossing the street. They slam on their brakes because they're not paying attention. Now, when I was 18 years old, that was my first accident, was Diversey and York Road. I was trying to turn left on southbound on York Road, someone was coming out of McDonald's, turning left, go northbound on York Road. Neither one of us saw each other, had on collision. My car took most of the damage. I walked out without a scratch, but at 18 years old, that is pretty scary. Had someone at the traffic light, which I've been saying to myself for years that they should put up there, just haven't seen it. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you again for your time.
Okay, that's it for public forum for those who signed up.
Is there anybody in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign up on our sign-in sheet but wishes to address the council at this time? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that concludes public forum for this evening. On to Agenda Item 5, announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Alderman Mulliner?
This Saturday is the St. Patrick's Day Parade on Spring Road. It begins at noon from Wilson to the Canadian National Tracks.
Alderman Hanquist?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce that tomorrow night, March 3rd, there will be a special meeting, joint meeting of the Development, Planning, and Zoning Committee and Zoning and Planning Commission to start discussions of some potential ordinance changes and updates. So, I believe that will be held in City Council Chambers. Is that right, Mr. Grabowski?
Yes, I believe it's, no, I'm sorry, Conference Room 2.
Conference Room 2.
Yeah.
So, that'll be in Conference Room 2 tonight, tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. Thanks.
Any other announcements? Alderman York?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple announcements. First of all, on Tuesday, March 10th, Alderman, Toledo, and I will be hosting a Fourth Ward meeting here in council chambers. It's at 7:30 immediately following the end of early voting, so we encourage all Fourth Ward residents and anybody else who wants to show up to come out. We will be streaming the meeting live on Ward4Elmhurst Facebook Live, so would like to see out there. Secondly, I'd like to announce, and this is a little longer one, it's pretty cool. The number 22-ranked Elmhurst College Men's Basketball Team has a record of 20 and 5 overall, 12 and 4 in the conference. This past week became the College Conference of Illinois and Wisconsin Tournament Champions by defeating Wheaton College on Wednesday, number 9-ranked North Central College on Friday, and finally on Saturday night, sadly, they beat Illinois Wesleyan University to take the championship. The Blue Jays are coached by Illinois Wesleyan alumni, John Baines, who's in his 7th season as the Elmhurst College Coach, and he's been, they have been selected to the NCAA Division III Basketball Tournament, and will travel to Worcester, Ohio, to take on Lycoming College at 4:00 p.m. this Friday. There will be a link on the Elmhurst EDU to view the game, and I certainly wish Coach Baines and all the guys the best of luck out there. Elmhurst beat IW here in Elmhurst earlier this year, and after the game, I asked Coach Baines, I said, "Was this a little bittersweet for you?" And he promptly replied with no hesitation whatsoever, "This was just sweet." So, Coach Baines was a junior when Wesleyan won an NCAA Division III tournament, so he knows how to coach. He knows how to win in this venue. So, I'm very excited about it. I encourage you all to support him. Just to put it in perspective, the kids who are seniors on this team were 8 and 17 overall when they were freshmen, and they were 4 and 12 in the CCIW. So, it's been a long, great road for them to this point, so.
Okay. Any other announcements? I don't think we can top that. Oh, I mean, Clerk Tamer, I hate to set you up that way, but the floor is yours.
Okay. Early voting began today, and it runs through March 14th here at City Hall. Hours Monday through Friday are 8:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., and Saturday, 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. And then, second, Elmhurst Commission on Youth is having their annual job and volunteer fair next Monday from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at York High School. It is free, no registration required, grade 6 and up for volunteer and job opportunities as well will be there. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go on to, oh, fantastic. Where's Aaron? Well, the city of Elmhurst is proudly participating in the 2020 Census, and there's a whole lot of reasons why we are participating, money being one of them. And I'm going to ask Aaron Jason to fill us in. Aaron volunteered to head the census on behalf of the city, and we are certainly appreciative of her efforts, and she's going to tell us what we're doing and what we've done.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The U.S. Census is mandated by the U.S. Constitution. It provides for state, county, and local funding. In fact, billions, that's billions with a B, in federal funding is distributed each year based on population counts. The full list on how the 2020 U.S. Census results will be used is extensive. Instead of reading to you about it myself, I want to share a video with you that features some familiar faces. This video, I would like to add, is funded in full by a grant the city's 2020 Complete Count Committee received from the state of Illinois. Mike, if you wouldn't mind playing?
I count, you count, everyone counts, Elmhurst. The city of Elmhurst is home to over 45,000 residents.
The U.S. Constitution mandates that everyone in the country be counted every 10 years. The United States counts everyone living in the country on April 1st, regardless of their nationality or living situation.
Completing the census is mandatory. It's a way to participate in our democracy and say, "I count." Taking part is your civic duty.
The census is about fair representation at the federal level. Every 10 years, the results of the census are used to determine how many seats each state gets in the House of Representatives.
After each decade's census, congressional, state, and local legislative district boundaries are redrawn to account for population shifts, including Elmhurst Ward boundaries.
The census is a snapshot in time. It aims to count the entire population of our country and the location each person usually lives. The census asks questions of people in homes and group living situations, including how many people live or stay in each home, as well as the sex, age, and race of each person. The goal is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place.
When you respond to the census, you help Elmhurst get its fair share of the more than $675 billion per year in federal funds spent on schools, hospitals, roads, public works, and other vital programs. Federal funds, grants, and support to states, counties, and communities are based on population totals and breakdowns by sex, age, race, and other factors. The community benefits most when the census counts everyone.
The census is a valuable tool for improving communities across the country. Funds distributed from the census equate to approximately $6 million annually for the city of Elmhurst. That allocation provides funding for local projects such as road resurfacing, and supports community initiatives from public safety preparedness to quality of life and economic development growth. If members of the community don't respond to the census, Elmhurst may not receive the funding it deserves.
Your census responses are safe and secure. The Census Bureau is required by law to protect any personal information collected and keep it strictly confidential. Your answers may only be used to produce statistics. They cannot be used for law enforcement purposes or to determine your personal eligibility for government benefits. To be clear, there will not be a citizenship question, and respondents will not be required to submit their social security number.
2020 will introduce the first modern census, the first to be available online. The days of the old-fashioned, long-form census are over. Because getting an accurate count is so important, the process is designed to be fast and easy. On average, it takes no more than 10 minutes to answer the questions on the census.
Beginning in March 2020, when it's time to respond, households will receive an invitation in the mail from the U.S. Census Bureau. Every household will have the option of responding online, by mail, or by phone. Households that don't respond in one of these ways will be visited by a census taker to collect the information in person. In the 2010 census, only 86% of Elmhurst households responded. You can help create a better future for Elmhurst by responding to the 2020 census. Providing an up-to-date and accurate count of our population is critical.
With an accurate snapshot of the Elmhurst community, the Park District is able to plan, budget, and develop new parks and programs that will be beneficial to the Elmhurst community.
An estimated 5% of children under the age of 5 weren't counted in the 2010 census. Census results help us understand how demographics, including income, education levels, and population size, are changing in Elmhurst. Having an accurate picture of all residents, including children 5 and younger, allows District 205 to engage in long-term planning to meet the needs of current and future students.
The Elmhurst Public Library, Elmhurst School District 205, the Elmhurst Park District, and City of Elmhurst are committed partners in making sure all of Elmhurst is counted accurately in the 2020 census.
Each week leading up to the census deadline, you can learn more about your fellow Elmhurst residents who are likewise committed to being counted in 2020. Join us in being counted.
Remember the census counts all people living or staying at an address, not just the person or family who owns or rests the property, so be sure to include your entire household.
To learn more about the U.S. Census, local programming, and where to find assistance in responding to Census 2020, please visit the city's website, elmhurst.org/census2020.
In addition to this video, Elmhurst Complete Count Committee has also produced, as they mentioned, a Local Faces Everyone Counts campaign, featuring 12 local Elmhurstians committed to being counted in the 2020 census. Since mid-January, you have seen their faces around town in posters and businesses, churches, other houses of worship, local establishments, as well as our community partners with the Park District and School District. They're also in every building at Elmhurst College. You'll also see them featured individually each week since mid-January. When they're featured on their featured week, we have a video for them, they're on our website, social media platforms, on the underpass, and in local newspapers. We've had an overwhelmingly positive response to this campaign. I can't tell you how many of those who have already been featured have called us and said, "I'm now that census guy that somebody saw on the underpass." It's a really great feeling when the community gets involved. They're all familiar faces that you may not have recognized before you saw them, but now you have a name with the face. I want to publicly thank those 12 individuals who participated. It was a big ask for us, especially our tweens and teens who are not sure they wanted their faces all over town. The participants ranged in age from 4 months to 91 years of age. They represent the full spectrum of our community, including hard-to-count populations such as children 5 and under, renters, college students, veterans, seniors, and so forth. This week, we invite the community to meet Matt. There are weekly videos. Each one has a census fact. Lastly, I just want to reiterate the timeline of census activity with you. Most households will receive their initial invitations to self-respond between March 12th and March 20th. That means they're headed your way in the midst of all the political mailers you're already receiving, so please watch for your census invitation. After the initial invitation is received, households will receive up to an additional three mailings to encourage them to self-respond. Then, in May 2020, people will start knocking on doors. Census takers will actually come to your door and begin visiting home at that time if you've not responded, so we do encourage you, again, to self-respond early. As you heard in the first video, you may choose to respond to the 2020 census online, by phone, or by mail. Responding online, which is new this year, is the easiest and fastest way to complete the 2020 census. It is safe, it is secure, and it is available in 13 different languages. Please visit elmhurst.org/census2020 to learn more, including watching a video that'll take you step by step through the online response process. It's really nice to kind of see the nine questions they're going to ask in advance and how quick and easy it would be without having to commit right away to responding. Lastly, as Chairman of the city's 2020 Census Complete Count Committee, I ask you to please support the census and join us in being counted. I count, you count, everyone counts, Elmhurst. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question, Aaron.
Sorry.
We have a question. Alderman Mulliner, you have a question?
Yes, I do. If they don't fill out the census and someone comes to their door, how will they be able to identify that that person is actually a census taker?
The U.S. Census Bureau is right now completing a full toolkit so that the press, the city will have information on exactly what badges they'll be carrying, what they will look like, et cetera. But the census takers coming to your door are people in the community. DuPage County residents will be going to DuPage County doors, so we will provide that information going forward, as we go forward, when they actually release those pictures.
Thank you. It's important to get that information out.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank Aaron and all of the Complete Count Committee for all of their hard work, and also want to thank
and also want to thank Cassandra Schreff for her work on the videos. Thanks again, Erin. Okay, on to consent agenda. At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman wishes to have removed to vote no or provide further comment? Alderman Leader?
Seven-eleven.
Seven-eleven. Seven-eleven, okay. Anyone else? Alderman Bram, seven-ten. Seven-ten. Okay, anyone else? I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items seven-point-one-zero and seven-point-one-one. Motion by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Bram. Clerk Tamer?
Kennedy?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palmsky?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda minus items seven-point-one-zero and seven-point-one-one is approved. On to agenda item seven-point-one-zero. This is a report out of Public Works. I would ask for the clerk to read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Building Committee that the city billing rates for thirty-five, sixty-five, and ninety-five-gallon container service stickers, yard waste stickers be adjusted annually as indicated above and on the attached spreadsheet for the contract period of April first, 2020, to March thirty-first, 2021. Signed, Jim Kennedy, Chair; Marty Deuter, Vice Chair; and Alderman Brennan, absent, Alderman Sabatino.
Okay, to put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will defer to Alderman Bram who pulled the report, please.
Alderman Bram, you pulled this. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As has been discussed in past years, I have concerns and concerns as we sit here today in regards to the prices, to the various gallon toters that we do offer here in the city of Elmhurst. I have been told at various occasions that when it's contract time, when we renew contracts for refuges, is the time to negotiate the cost per toter. Then when that moves forward without any substantial facts behind why those costs have been dictated, and I have asked that of our provider, and essentially he said it was a wave of the finger, not that way, sorry, a litmus test wave of the finger. Then it was every year that we do some adjustments that that was the opportunity to level set. I know it's been discussed to pretty much say that every single toter should have the per, same per gallon cost, same administrative fees, same everything. And I think, as you see the data before you, I think that has hurt the city of Elmhurst overall. And what I mean by that is, the thirty-five-gallon toter was predicted, I believe, if memory serves me correctly, to above two-thousand units when it was first introduced, and currently throughout the city of Elmhurst, we're at one-hundred-and-thirty-one. When I took an unofficial poll of my neighbors, the reason being is that there's, I think it's a couple dollars or a few-dollar difference between the toters, so what is the point of spending about the same amount of monies for a smaller toter? Even though we're a sustainable city, even though we talk about doing everything environmentally friendly with these rates and how they're distributed today and with this proposed report in front of us, that is not actually walking that talk of sustainability when we're charging the same amount for the smaller-sized toter that less goes to the landfills. With all that said, I will not be supporting this report.
Anyone else? Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to highlight, you know, over the years, we've talked about, the goal here is to cover our administrative costs. So we do that by the administrative fee, and we also do that by the, what it costs us for the sticker program. So what we did as a committee is we looked at both of those things, and since we had not adjusted the stickers for, I believe, at least five years, we made that decision to go from three-twenty-five to three-fifty. Ultimately, like I said, our goal is to cover the costs. I think it was just over two-hundred-and-ninety thousand with the sticker, excuse me, two-ninety-two with the sticker increase and the rates that we have in the report for administrative, we're at two-ninety-nine. If you look over the previous years, we've had some pluses and minuses, but our goal is to get to kind of a net zero over time, and that's what we've done with this report. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? I'm going to ask Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Palmsky?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one nay, zero absent.
Thirteen ayes, one nay. Motion carries. Gen item seven-point-one-zero is approved. On to agenda item seven-point-one-one. This is a report out of Public Works. I would ask the clerk to please read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Building Committee that the city billing rates for thirty-five, sixty-
Oh, keep.
Oh, gee. I heard that. Sorry. Okay. It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Buildings Committee based upon the information provided by E.E.I. in their traffic signal warrant analysis study that no changes to the intersection of York Street and Diversey Avenue are implemented at this time, that city staff continue to investigate the non-traffic signal-related recommendations, and the city attorney be authorized to prepare the appropriate city council documents. Signed, Jim Kennedy, Chair; Marty Deuter, Vice Chair; and Alderman Brennan, absent, Alderman Sabatino.
To put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will defer to Alderman Leader who pulled the report.
Alderman Leader, you pulled this report. The floor is yours.
I did. Thank you. I'm here to confess, I have spent fifteen years on the city council, and during that time, I have never questioned or opposed a recommendation from the Public Works Department. I simply do not have the knowledge or work experience to question them. Also, I acknowledge and appreciate the many thoughtful safety recommendations of the Though, I admit to a layman's concerns about what are a challenging, dangerous, and at times lethal combination of schoolchildren, McDonald's, and a plethora of left turns. Forgive me, but I can't help but sense that we are dancing on dynamite over there. So I am engaged in a debate between my heart and my reason. I have reached an age when I sometimes suspect that the heart has its reasons, of which reason knows nothing. In any case, like the graceful ghost, even if I may stand alone, I will hide in the shadows of this issues. I must vote no. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly appreciate the folks coming out from Crown Estates, had many conversations with them in committee, and also outside of that, to look at this issue. That's what started the warrant analysis, and as everyone understands and read the report, unfortunately, there were none of the warrants that were met. And you and other people are correct that when we've looked at traffic studies and whether it's around a yield sign or a stop sign, it is not a hard and fast rule. There is some interpretation, but I know, in my experience, those are usually when there is a tipping point, it's, there are warrants that are met, and then there's some, you know, logic and thought put to that. So with zero of the nine met, it certainly, as a committee, we looked at it and said there was really, you know, this is an uphill climb. And ultimately, as you look at this area and you look at things like this, it's, you know, we have to ask ourselves, what's the problem we're trying to solve, right? And it really comes down to, you know, it's four lanes of traffic, it's leftouts, it's all those things that go in there with curb cuts and such. And the study did not come back and say that a traffic light at that intersection was warranted. What the report does talk about are those things that we need to take forward to address that intersection, and that is certainly one around curb cuts, and the North York Plan specifically talks about that, and so that is that. As that plan gets developed, that will assist in us ultimately addressing some of the issues that are up in that area. Secondly, we know that there's improvements to happen at York and Grand, so Dupage DOT, IDOT, Addison Township, you know, we need to engage them, if we haven't already, to do so and do so more, so that the reasons why people might be cutting through the neighborhood or otherwise, you know, making their way with added volume onto southbound York can help address some of these issues here. We can do it that way. And then thirdly, is related to signage along Grand Avenue. There certainly are ways to reduce that cut through traffic. We could look at different things about restricting left-hand turns or whatever the case, but the reality is, just by putting in a traffic light at this area is not going to get to the root cause of why this intersection has, or this stretch of road has the accident history that it does. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Bram?
Thank you. In regards to this issue, it's, any type of traffic control device is near and dear to my heart. Before I go into that, though, I do want to, I guess, maybe clarify, voting no to this report pretty much says to staff, "We're doing nothing." I mean, this is a report that says, "Make recommendations of curb cuts, et cetera," not for the traffic signal, but by voting no, you're saying doing nothing compared to doing at least something. And I want to clarify that because if anybody who wants to vote no, we're pretty much saying, well, we're washing our hands in it, which I don't think that is the intent of anybody on the dais. If it is strongly felt that a traffic signal is warranted by any alderman, then I would encourage a motion to amend for that, for that traffic signal. With that said, it's hard to justify a traffic signal when, as Alderman Kennedy already stated, none of the warrants have been met, not one. There's no, at least in my mind, in my perspective, there's no engineering judgment that could take you over the goal line to say, "Okay, a traffic signal is needed here," when out of the nine warrants that were looked at, not one of them passed the test. So with that said, and I know some of the residents really want it and think it is the solution, I will tell you that stop sign, yield sign, in this case, a traffic signal, sometimes, not always, but sometimes actually does more harm than good. You talked, it was talked about, cut through traffic. Well, cut through, bless you, cut through traffic, albeit if there's a stoplight, you can't cut through, but if it's green, there's going to be not only some, but more cut-through traffic to race to get through that stoplight to cut around. So traffic control devices are that, to control traffic, not to prevent, and it is in the MUTCD, not to prevent cut-through traffic. None of those devices do that. That is not the answer, hasn't been, won't be, and the future. So I appreciate all the residents for coming out and spending a lot of time, but with that, no warrants are met, I cannot make an amendment to move forward with a traffic signal, so I applaud the committee for moving forward with some type of improvements, and will hopefully revisit that if there's still a problem after those improvements move forward.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Palmsky?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking at public forum. We're better off because of it when people participate and make their needs known to us, so I appreciate that. And I also want to thank the committee and staff for their work on this and moving forward with the traffic study. Nobody likes to be part of the committee or the council to hear a request and then come to the conclusion that what somebody is asking for may not be warranted. We get to do that a little bit more often on public affairs and safety. We just did it with some residents on Glade, unfortunately, although, again, there could be additional monitoring and similar to this situation, should the conditions change, we can always reevaluate. I will support the committee with its report to have some additional changes that line up with our North York Plan. I do want to point out a couple of things that this traffic study did look at traffic volume for both eight hours and four hours, and peak hour, pedestrian volume, both four-hour and school crossing, number of accidents, both the severity and the frequency, and it was evaluated in the context of the surrounding traffic control devices and roadway grade and network. So this was a thorough evaluation, and as it was mentioned here, these warrants didn't even cross over into a perhaps gray area or being close. We wouldn't be able, I wouldn't be able to justify putting this in, so I support the committee. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Dunn?
I also want to thank the committee and staff. I know Public Works has worked pretty diligently on this issue, identifying the consultant and working with them to develop an approach to evaluate this. Alderman Palmsky and I put the referral in to examine the need for some type of traffic control there, whether it be a traffic light or something else. And, you know, with that came a study, an evaluation, and then a review by the committee, and then moving to council. I recognize that, I think the study was a good one, as Alderman Palmsky points out, there are crashes, speeds, left turns were looked at pedestrians, so it was fairly comprehensive in looking at things that might drive you to want to have that there. So because of the situation of not meeting any of the nine warrants, it would be difficult to support that at this time. I think the positives are, there are some measures that were recommended that staff will pursue, and I'm convinced they will help. And there's the opportunity to look at a traffic light in the future. If we feel that we need to go that direction, if we put the traffic light in now, and that ends up not being the right thing, it becomes a lot more difficult to go backpedal on that decision. So, you know, with that, I would support the committee's recommendation. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Clerk Tamer?
Kennedy?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Nay.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palmsky?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one nay, zero absent.
Thirteen ayes, one nay, motion carries. Agenda item 7.11 is approved. Onto agenda item eight, committee reports. 8.1 is a report out of finance. I would ask that Clerk Tamer, read the recommendation.
It's 8.1. Which one am I on? 8.1. Okay. It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance Council Affairs and Administrative Service Committee that the city council defer any decision to increase the home rural sales tax at this time and continue to explore all of the options that exist in order to recommend a holistic strategy to fund the existing and planned asset improvements of the city. Signed Noel P. Toledo, Chair Kevin L. York, Vice Chair, unsigned Alderman Michael J. Bram and Alderman Tina Park.
Okay. To put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Shubha Alderman, Toledo, second by Alderman York. Alderman Toledo, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, we have a majority and a minority report, certainly a slightly unusual occurrence for a four-person committee to come out with a two and two vote, and I think we all recognize that. As it relates to the majority report, let me be clear. Tonight, the majority report is simply stating that any recommendation is premature and would be rushed in the opinion of the majority report. Let me explain why. First, this is an important decision and the report in front of you suggests that it requires and should have the benefit of a thorough and methodical review, which we have the time to do, so we do not need to rush into a decision. Secondly, we have funds available to cover any debt service that we are obligated to pay in 2020. So we do not need to establish a new revenue source at this time to meet those obligations. Third, the whole committee agrees, as stated in the minority report and the majority report, that a possible stormwater fee should be looked at. Fourth, this is a complex topic. My goal, as mentioned in the majority report, is to find a way to ensure that everyone, both in the public and here sitting on the dais, has a solid foundation of information to properly evaluate any recommendation that ultimately comes out of our committee and make a balanced judgment on that recommendation. How we accomplish that is still up in the air, but it's important to me that this happens and that that opportunity is afforded to everyone. So I thank you and I ask you for your support to continue vetting this recommendation at the committee and to not impose any increased taxes at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Bram and I put together a minority report because as we were discussing this at many a meeting of our finance team, you know, we had asked staff to pull together different new revenue sources that could pay for the debt service that we have already taken on. And, you know, through that, I think we kind of got started on a path of one revenue source or another. But I think after much discussion with our team of colleagues here and listening to varying perspectives and insights and experience, which I am also grateful for as still a newbie, and reflecting on that, that I think the most fiscally responsible way to pay for our debt service for this year is to continue with the budget plan that we have to utilize the tax dollars that we have already collected. But of course, that's not sustainable. So I still am very much an advocate for implementing a sales tax which, of a quarter percent, which, you know, we can list out and help everybody understand. There were things I learned, like that doesn't apply to our car dealerships and things like that. There are, you know, varying things that, you know, are helpful to understand as you're wrapping your head around it. I was thinking that we should implement that on July 1st because I thought there was a need that we, that maybe our general funds would suffer if we were going to dip into that, to be paying for this debt service. But, you know, as I said, listening to, you know, the wealth of knowledge that we have as a team, I understand that, you know, it is something that actually will be healthy for us to utilize in a very important way, this money that the people have already contributed to investing in our community. So I will look forward to, you know, having further discussions with our finance committee. I, you know, was acting on what I thought would be a good timely way to implement something that would be important. And I, you know, I like to make things happen that I think are important. And so that's what we were going for. But I am fully open to admit that as I learn more, which I am never going to stop learning, that I have the right to, you know, go and think differently about things and gain a new perspective. I hope we all will, you know, if that is the way it needs to be. So I won't be signing the minority report. I also won't be signing the majority report just because I disagree with some of the, you know, conclusions and language, but I do look forward to further discussion about coming up with a comprehensive plan that will deal with this debt service as well as the obligations that we have to keep the, all these stormwater systems that we put in place. Eventually, at some point, there's going to be some stuff that we need to do to upkeep and maintain them. And we'll have to figure out what that's going to be and how much that's going to cost and how we're going to pay for it because we don't want to just put it in place and then let it be. So, thanks for listening.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start out with saying that there were statements that this has been or would be rushed or premature if we move forward with a quarter percent sales tax, home rule sales tax tonight. I disagree with that. I think the opposite, that if we do not move forward, we're not only leaving monies on the table, but the burden on the taxpayers are gonna, is going to be larger when it comes to next year compared to where we sit today. It's ironic because we currently have allocated a quarter percent home rule sales tax to stormwater projects today. And I think that this option is the best option and the reason, the easiest and most glaring reason why is because it's shared amongst residents and non-residents. A stormwater fee is only residents. Any other fee, property tax increase, residents. And I'll go, I'm not going to go down the line, most of the options that we had presented before us were strictly tied to residents. We've already done it before. There shouldn't be any hesitation about doing it again. In one of our committee meetings, our last one this past Monday, I even joked with the mayor about how I am so resistant of doing any type of increase, fee increase, sales tax, et cetera. But this is a need. We as a council have already, the consensus of the council has already approved bonds that we do not have a revenue source to pay for past 2020. With that said, we don't even have, even if we move forward with this, we don't have enough to pay for everything in our capital budget that we all approved during budget discussions. So why are we going to wait? A lot of us, or I'm going to go out on a limb and say, all of us in committee have said that more than likely, we're going to have to look at one more or more than one pot of money, a pot of revenue stream, to be able to do what we want to do according to our budget. So if we're going to do this eventually, which I don't have a crystal ball, but more than likely, we're going to either do a stormwater fee or some type of revenue source increase eventually, in the very near term, within six months, why are we waiting to do it later this year versus now? Being in a leadership role is a tough position. You got to make hard decisions. Why delay it? We've made that decision once. It served us well. We need to make it again and we need to make it now. Delaying it, like I said, is leaving dollars on the table. I was open, and I've communicated this in the committee, to looking at, and it states in, I think in both reports, looking at the stormwater fee. Moving forward with a quarter percent sales tax increase doesn't say that's where it's going to stop. That's going to bring us towards the goal line, but it's not going to get us across the goal line. So we still need to move forward with that. I also made mention during discussions in the committee, which we did discuss about this topic many a times, and there's a lot, as you all know, a lot of information on board docs under the committee's agenda about this issue. If we went forward with the quarter percent sales tax, it doesn't outprice us compared to other communities, we're right in the ballpark with most communities. So there's no harm there, there's no foul there. It is beneficial to share the burden like we already do with residents, but as well as non-residents. I threw out a compromise to even say, let's have a sunset clause. Let's, if we think that there's other revenue sources that are better, we'll put a timetable on this quarter percent and therefore be able to retract it at a time certain. That wasn't moved upon, but that is always an option. I have no issue with reconsidering it if we find a better revenue stream, but we all approve the budget. We don't have dollars. We're already paying on bonds. We can't afford past 2020. So therefore, I hope you all support the minority report. And at this time, I like to make a motion to substitute the majority report with the minority report.
Different words than you choose. Different words, but I think we understand the sentiment. So a motion made to substitute minority for the majority, my words, but you get the idea. Okay. Motion. Alderman Bram, I don't see a second. Motion fails for lack of second. Continued discussion on the original motion before us. Anyone else? Alderman Hanquist.
Thank you, Mayor. Although I understand the discussion, I think we are moving into a period of time that last week has highlighted that an economic boom cannot go on forever. We're 10 years into one. We are living in a state that has obvious financial problems and at some point, all of us in the state are going to have to get creative in how we meet our budgets. And some of that creativity is going to have to come from something besides a tax increase. It just can't go on. In the Tribune last week, there was a large article on how commercial real estate in Cook County in the city of Chicago dropped in half and has not seen a drop like that since the 08 depression, recession, however you want to call it, and is the news in the business world, particularly in commercial real estate globally right now. We have some serious, serious problems in this state, but luckily, DuPage County and the city of Elmhurst are well-run and we are financially more stable than some of our counterparts to the east and other places within this state. But nonetheless, we have some serious challenges ahead of us. I think leadership is taking a step back and looking at what we can do, not only with taxes, but in any other area, to adjust for our budget numbers, to address what we have to address while we look for alternatives to just simply passing a tax increase. Property taxes, as everyone knows, are affecting the state and the home values across the state. And the only way as we go forward this year with the governor's plan is through income tax adjustments and increases, and then eventually, it's going to be sales tax increases. At some point in time, we all have to stop and say, this problem is not going to get solved by more and more taxes to more and more people. So I am in complete support of the majority report. I think we need to take some time and look at any and all alternatives to either expense reduction or revenue, a revenue increase. And if at some point in time, we do have to go to a revenue increase, I just want to make sure we crossed every T, dotted every I, to look at doing everything we possibly can to not raise a tax. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman York, you had your hand up and then I'll go to Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, you know, I agree with Alderman Toledo's, basically what she said about this being just too rushed of a decision. We, if everybody's paying attention to accounts payables today, we paid like $8.3 million or something like that in debt service today, and we've got the funds to do that, they're budgeted for. The quarter percent sales tax that we already have in effect is paying the current debt service on stormwater through at least the end of 2021, perhaps a little bit longer based on current estimates. So we have the time to continue fruitful discussions in the committee about all the options that we have and a good way to fund this on a long-term holistic basis, and I appreciate everybody supporting that effort.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll also be supporting the majority report since that's the only one on the dais at this point. That said, I think we have a plan, you know, through 2020 to, you know, abate this debt service. And at this point, I don't see it necessary to, you know, deviate from that original plan. I do believe that Chairman Toledo laid this out very well, and I also believe that I'm expecting out of that committee, a comprehensive plan that will look at all options. And I think, just to change the narrative a little bit, I don't think, you know, taxing more is the answer. I think if we are going to continue to advance our city, I think we need to look at creative ways, prioritize our capital projects and make sure that we have a comprehensive view of our future. I do believe that the 2018 and 2019 debt that we've, GO bond debt that we've taken on, we need to deal with that, we need to deal with that head-on. But I think as we think about the future, and Alderman Hanquist had a very good point, you know, look at the stock market over the last week, you know, hopefully it goes right back up and, you know, there's nothing to worry about. But these are things that all need to be factored in, and as we're looking at a comprehensive approach to this, I would expect those variables to be weighed in. Thank you.
Alderman Levin.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that we have to consider how we got here in a way, and that is, if you went back to 10 years, we didn't have all these stormwater problems. We have taken a leadership role amongst communities to address something that we were faced with. The Public Works Committee has done a lot of work in trying to prioritize projects and get the ones that have the most bang for the buck. And we responded to our community to, in a sense, save our community in some ways from this new reality. So as we go forward, I don't have any doubt that we, I mean, it was told to us in the budget process that we are going to take on this GO bond, we're doing it now, we need the money, the rates are great, so it made sense, and that we would have to evaluate alternatives. There are some, I appreciate the idea of starting something now, but I think that there are some side problems. I would not want to be the one to go out and pass something like this with urgency without consulting with our business community. We have at least one very large retailer or in town that might affect them. We're not, I don't see that we're really that much less amongst municipalities around us that we wouldn't be putting ourselves up by a slight percent. When I look at the communities that have some of the larger... When I look at the communities that have some of the larger sales tax add-ons, there might be Springfield or Monmouth or someplace where they're sort of not quite as contiguous with surrounding communities. So it's possible that's something we would do. I would want to consult with the business community. I'd want to make sure that we know what the impact is. And I also wouldn't want to do it to sunset. If we put it out, there are administrative costs to this. You don't just turn it on and turn it off like a light switch. You've got to implement it and track it. So I think we should stay the course and do what we said we were going to do, and that is to evaluate it in 2020 and be ready to go after this year. So I will be supporting the report.
Anyone else? Alderman Toledo, then I'll go to Alderman Bram.
Thank you. I would just like to clarify that by not starting the home real sales tax, that does not create additional burden on the taxpayer. We have enough money in our checking account to pay our debt service this year. We will not incur any additional interest, expense, or other fees by not implementing this home real sales tax in July. We would simply be asking residents and guests to pay more starting in July that we don't necessarily need at that time. Thank you.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you. Alderman Toledo's comments are correct. Not at this time. We're not putting a burden on our residents at this time. If we implement a stormwater fee, we will be. If we wait, we lost revenue, or in my view at least, lost revenue, so we will be. We don't have dollars to pay for everything in our budget, so we will be. Right now, we're talking about that million and a half that we need for stormwater bonds. That's it. Not everything else. We talked about various scenarios in committee. We're not even talking about the grand scheme of scenarios here. We're talking about the middle of the road. So we don't have all the dollars. And we will put a burden if we have to do something, a revenue source that impacts residents, which most do only impact the residents. In regards to the business community, I will say that we're about in the middle of the pack in regards to sales tax percentage. So I don't see that being any issue. It's been mentioned about, well, we need to take our time and let's not rush into it. We haven't. We met multiple times on this topic in committee. We reviewed, if everybody's looked at the committee documents, we reviewed a ton of various revenue sources. Nobody here who's arguing of not, of, nobody up here has made a suggestion on what is this solution then of moving forward to actually solve our, what I would say, systemic issue. I could sit here and say, yeah, let's find another revenue source. Let's be creative. Well, city staff has done a great job with providing us a laundry list of various revenue sources, including stormwater, a stormwater fee, proposed stormwater fee. So we can all say that, but we need to take action on it. In regards to expenses, this is the same council who approved stormwater detention area an additional $2 million to do it underground compared to do it in above ground. So are we cutting expenses? I would argue, the consensus of the council has been not to, because that was an additional $2 million that's being taken out of these geo bonds to pay for something that, at least in my opinion, didn't necessarily need to be done. So what expenses are we cutting? We haven't cut any out of the budget when we discussed about the budget. We haven't had any proposals for that. So what expenses are there cut? What revenue sources, other than the ones that have currently been reviewed, at least initially discussed by the committee, what other revenue sources are there? I get it. It's not a great situation. It's a horrible situation, as Alderman Hanquist has stated. State of Illinois is in a horrific position, and I'm sure they're going to put it on all the municipalities. So it's not going to be easy moving forward either. But we also have to worry about how are we going to resolve this issue? And one way to do it that is shared amongst others is the quarter percent sales tax. We committed at that time, and I think the finance committee even made statements at that time, when we went forward with the bonds, that we would look for a revenue source to pay for those bonds. This proposal, the minority report, is a proposal to do so, and to do so today compared to down the line.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Dunn.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's good that we're having this discussion now. Had there not been a minority report in the agenda, you know, maybe we wouldn't have as formally up on the dais. So this is a very important topic. Our source of funds versus our expenditures and remaining in a healthy position. Back 10 years ago, when I was on the financial task force that Pete DeCiani, who spoke earlier, formed when he was mayor, we were in a, we were in a pretty tough situation with the economy tanking, revenues going down, sales tax being one of them, and we really hadn't cut expenses leading into that situation. So, you know, that was a jolt for us. We had to do things like raise the taxes, notably the property tax, along with not abating our debt service, which we had generally done. So we, fortunately, we were able to quickly right the ship after a few years of a little bit of austerity and hard work, and been in a good situation the past few years. But I too am concerned about the overall economy and the state, and I think we have to continue to focus on sustainable revenue sources and controlling expenses, headcount, the projects we do, services we employ, the things we buy, to be fiscally responsible. But this quarter percent we're talking about, several years ago, when I was on the finance committee with, you know, most of the same folks that are still, that are on there now, the county had a quarter percent sales tax that was expiring. They had enacted that to pay for some shortfalls that they had. And we quickly inserted this quarter percent as that was expiring to fund our stormwater projects. That was a long discussion. It was a difficult decision to enact that quarter percent tax, but it has been a stable revenue source for us to fund a lot of these stormwater projects. To tack another one on top of that, at this time, I would like to see other options. So I think what the committee is recommending, really looking at all revenue sources and possibly scrutinizing expenditures as well, I think that's the way to go.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Clark Tamer to call the vote.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
No.
Levin.
Aye.
12 ayes, 2 nays, 0 absents.
12 ayes, 2 nays, motion carries. Agenda item 8.1 is approved. Onto reports and recommendations of appointed and elected officials. Mayor Morley, that's me. Couple things, they've already been mentioned, but I will restate and emphasize them. Our world famous St. Pat's Parade is this Saturday at noon. I'm looking forward to seeing all of the elected officials march in that with me. Job Fair, this is really for the parents out there. If you have teenagers, this is the place to go for this summer. I can't tell you how many, whether it's volunteering or jobs, there are dozens and dozens and dozens of organizations that are there, that are represented, that physically take job applications while they're there. So please, if your teenager is telling you they can't find a job for the summer, send him to this thing. 294 South, this is only for a week, but if you're coming on 294 South from O'Hare and you try to exit onto 290 West, that exit will be closed for a week. Right now, it's scheduled to be closed for a week. They're going to do some utility movement. ComEd is laying down some stuff, and so they have to close that. Word of caution, if you are coming south on 294, the reroute is at Mannheim Avenue. So just a little bit of a warning, if you're coming from O'Hare, maybe you jump on Mannheim or Irving Park or something. That's only for a week. And then finally, City of Elmhurst did a press release about the coronavirus last Friday, was it last Friday?
Friday.
Last Friday, we did a press release. And actually, this, just this last Sunday evening, city manager and I participated on a conference call with Mayor Lightfoot from Chicago. She organized it, along with some other mayors. It was very informational. The city of Chicago, state of Illinois, is really quite prepared for the amount of cases we have so far, which are, I think, three, maybe a little more at this point. Basically, I would encourage anybody who has questions to go to the city of Elmhurst website and pull up our press release. There's numerous links there, including phone numbers and emails that you can call if you have questions about the coronavirus. I would say, a word of caution. The folks in the news are there to sell news sometimes. I'm not going to tell you how to feel about this, except to say, no offense, except to say that do your own research and become educated on the process, educated on the coronavirus. I think the, it was very helpful, the information that was shared, and you can read the information directly on the website. Get educated. Do smart things. Wash your hands, that kind of good stuff. And that's it. City manager.
Thank you. Just one item tonight. Today, vehicle stickers went on sale. They are available at City Hall, online, or by mail, and they must be purchased and displayed by May 1st. Information's available on our website.
Any other reports? Alderman York.
I have a question. The closure of that exit, do we have an idea of when it might happen and where can we find out when it's going to happen?
Now, it's supposed to be today.
It wa, we used it today.
In theory.
Well, yeah, I believe they were overnight closures.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I missed that part, huh?
Yeah. So they were overnight closures. In fact, I was going to thank deputy chief for coordinating our midnight shift. They helped to close some of those ramps. It was delayed a couple of days because of weather, but they, I believe that they've got that all done. Howard's shaking his head yes. Howard's been our contact point for the tollway. So I believe while we were sleeping, all this work was going on, and I think it's complete. We'll verify that, though.
Okay. Fantastic.
Okay, thank you.
So it's overnight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was the part I missed. I was just trying to limit the amount of traffic in Elmhurst. I was through the fourth word. We wouldn't have answered. Okay. Any other business? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Brennan, second of Alderman Deuter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Return. Thank you, everybody.